Okay, we'll move on to the action items. The first item is Johnson Controls Contract. I think we heard the motion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, may we go with Johnson Controls?
All right.
Second.
Okay, it's been built and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye is the order.
Morris. Give me approval to sign off on that because it is in my name.
Yeah, we would set up for Veda Herman's approval if that meets everybody's agreement.
I guess we can do that.
Okay.
Make that a part of the motion. We have Resolution 2015-04, capital outlay. That's Veda Herman's item.
Again, I think it was March or April, we approved the continuation of the capital outlay, two mill that goes to deferred maintenance. And we're getting ready to pay off three million of our debt structure that was allocated to capital outlays. So we have a mill available to borrow again so that we can get some of this capital outlay projects done. The other mill went to the Student Activity Centers with IRVs. So what we're presenting to you tonight is for us to do debt service on 1.5 million through a ransom company. And it is all printed over to John and ask him to do the resolution, go through the resolution.
Good evening. John Haas with Ransom Financial Consultants. And John, just was amazing tonight. I think I brought my wife here for our anniversary dinner. It was just great. I would like to digress a second on the Johnson Controls. The interest rates and such that Veda was talking about, of course, are just estimated. Interest rates, the interest rate market moves on a daily basis. And with approval, what we'll do is we'll set up a competitive bid process like we always do for things. So you receive bids and you can accept or reject those bids. But we'll have a calendar and a plan of finance for you at your next meeting for that particular purpose. Now, back to the capital outlay, general obligation bonds. Debt service schedule estimate, you can size a bond issue based equal to the amount of cash flow that you believe will be available from capital outlay. Veda told me not to go over 320,000. So we're estimating a project bond issue of a million 520. With that, down on the lower left-hand corner, you'll see the proposed projects that would be authorized by the resolution that you will consider after we're done with the presentation. Activity Center estimated cost 324,780. Improvements to the gym, 46,000. An asphalt road for 296,000. North parking lot, 300,000. A concrete drive of 509,000. The cost of issuance is 28,194, and those are itemized to the right. The underwriter's discount would be the maximum amount that we would allow an underwriter to charge you on a bid process. So that's how we come up to a million 520. Now, the concrete drive, we're just estimating at the half million dollar level. If that bid would happen to come in less than half a million, those bond proceeds could be used for other deferred projects that would be approved by the board. Any questions you may have for me about the plan of finance at this point in time?
Question for Veda. The asphalt or the concrete drive, what all is that?
That would just be the concrete and the U-shaped driveway.
In the front?
Uh-huh, with the curves. And that's just an estimate. But we can change that if we decide we don't want to spend that much money on the driveway. We can change it and start on the south parking lot as long as we stay within the statute that it's deferred maintenance.
Well, does that drive the asphalt at this time?
Yes.
And you want to make it concrete?
What we have is most of the curves and gutter, a lot of it needs to be replaced. So all that will have to be tore out, the asphalt probably, to get that all replaced. It just depends on, I was asked, what do we want for longevity? I would imagine with the new dome, there's going to be a lot of buses coming in for deals. That's why I thought the concrete would hold standard traffic better than a blacktop road. With blacktop, we have more maintenance. Every three to four years, we're going to have to seal cracks and over, or seal the whole lot. Whereas with concrete, 20, 25 years, we should be pretty well set with no maintenance up on.
And this will accommodate?
Excuse me?
This will accommodate the new access to the Activity Center?
Part of that, I don't know how that is right now, but Brian Marshall with Building Solutions, they're going to have to have a entrance and a new exit around that. So we want to incorporate the new drive with that, working with them later on. And that's why I thought, you know, we're going to pour concrete around the dome. Traffic-wise, I think it'll stand up longer and pay for itself in the long run.
Is the entrance that bad now? I guess I never noticed it.
The entrance?
The entrance and exit?
We're starting to see where we have to seal cracks more. We're going to have to seal the whole parking lot. We should be doing it on a three to no more than four, five years. Right now, we're probably at six years on the average. If you drive around the campus and see a bunch of spider webs close, that's where it's, the subsoil's deteriorating on us. Water's going down there, and as it, more water gets in there, those spots grow. The only way we can take care of those is tear those completely out, repack the soil, lay in brand-new asphalt, and then cover it like we're planning for the south parking lot. So we're at our life. Some of these roads have been here from day one. All we've done is minimum maintenance and not as regular as we should.
So how much of that concrete cost is to actually do the entrance and exit? And how much of the 500,000 is to accommodate the new dome?
The dome, we shouldn't have any on that. That is, they should have allowed for our entrance and exits off of that.
I thought you said something, this is going around the dome, though?
When, around the dome? That's figured what their price should be. They have a road that goes around it. So what we will accommodate is just on the horseshoe. I would say that 50%, of the curb and gutter needs to be replaced. So that's a big cost of it. Then the road itself, we will just not pour curb and gutter where the entrance to the dome is. We'll just pour a concrete road.
So what's the 324,000 for the Activity Center?
That is different equipment. Do you have those listed as, what is the, did you staple it on? I know one of them is the elevator, but that will be, that's about 21% of the cost. And that would be, we will build the foundation for 67,507 a year for that.
I thought we were told all of the costs for the Activity Center were going to be donated money and raised money.
Well, this will be built to the foundation. I don't know where they'll get that money, but they'll have to raise it.
But we're borrowing the money to pay for it?
Yes, the college is. And I can't remember, do you have? It's stuff that wouldn't qualify for equipment. And the foundation asked me to look because of cash flow? It's the casework. I don't know what the casework is. It's 20,000. Do you know what the case?
Woodwork and stuff?
Woodwork and stuff like that. For cash flow purposes, the foundation asked me to try to find a way that we can borrow the money and then they would pay the payments. That's what it comes down to. This is stuff that won't qualify for equipment, so I put it in on our capital outlay. But it's about 21% of the amount that I'm borrowing. So it would be, we'd build a foundation 67,000 a year for the payment. This payment doesn't, won't start for a year.
Fiscal 17.
I had a question for Greg on the concrete drive. Is there anything under there that is going to have to be dug up sometime? Pikes or electric lines or anything?
Not that I know of right now. And it'd be just the same as if it was blacktop, we've been gone by this year. The only thing there is, most of our electrical, either the islands, what I call them, are on the side. There's nothing that I know of that's directly under the road, like the cities, they have stuff under.
Yeah, okay.
That I know of.
Veda, in this bond estimate, it says north parking lot, but the resolution says south parking lot. Resurfacing the south parking lot, correct?
Yes, that's.
We're doing the south.
The resolution that we got says, yes, south.
The new south parking lot.
Okay, then that would, if it's the south parking lot, that would be a type of line.
I definitely would check.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
But it is the south, the larger one?
Yes.
The big one?
The big one, south parking lot.
Thanks for the clarification. That's a type of line. North, south.
But that, I'm just borrowing the money for deferred maintenance. If we would decide not to do the concrete and just go asphalt, we would then move to the next parking lot that would need the asphalt. And I'm just trying to get the money at 3%. It averages a 3% so that we can start doing some of this. This will be paid off in three, I think it's four years?
It would be paid off in July of 2020, so five years.
Five years that we'd have this paid off, but I'd have the money to go ahead and get this. We need to get started on our roadways.
I agree. I think it's, I mean, I've said it before, that just keeps getting thicker. It's going to.
Yeah, we've got to get started on some of the deferred maintenance.
I mean, I think it's absolutely imperative that we start working on these things. And as our previous talk with Johnson Controls is that we need, we have big deferred maintenance issues there, two and a half million dollars, 2.6 million dollars worth. So, I mean, I don't disagree with it at all, but I think we can absorb the additional cost of that without altering our budget for the Johnson Controls with the chillers and these things by designating the funding to come from this for those payments versus the Activity Center, which, again, as Dr. Joy raised, wasn't really part of the, that was not what we originally voted on or supported from the beginning, was funding that. I mean, we were funding the mill that we're already giving to that project. So I don't know that continuing to fund more of it right now is really what was in support of this board.
That's, that's your choice. We can, if they decide not to fund the 324,000, we could use that for deferred maintenance.
For other deferred projects.
For other deferred projects, yes, we could. If that, that's up to the board, make that decision.
We had a discussion with bond counsel this afternoon, just with that specific issue with that. Veda brought it up. I wanted a clarification regarding that. And the main issue is that you're issuing a million 520, and the estimated interest rate is a 160 on that. If the board would choose not to proceed with any of these projects, then Veda would notify a change of how the bond proceeds would be to the board before the closing date of the bond issue to make sure that the board is supportive of what those bond proceeds are going to be spent upon. If you felt strong enough that you did not want to include the Activity Center, that could be the amendment, the resolution could be actually amended to strike that if that's what you wish to do.
Personally, I don't have a problem with the rest of the items. But like I said, I've said this 100 times, all along we've been told we weren't going to borrow money for the Activity Center, and here we are, every meeting we're talking about it. It is what it is.
I'd support amending the motion to strike that but replace it with the deferred maintenance costs that we're going to need to compensate for Johnson Controls situation when we try to update those because that is deferred maintenance. And then depending on what those dollar amounts work out, if we can continue to do this under our current capital outlay, then if there's more money in there, which there should be based on the numbers they gave us, then hopefully incorporate the north parking lot into that or if that's the next piece of the puzzle there. I don't know. But I, I don't support it going forward like this, I'll say that.
Dr. Press?
Yes?
If I could, the COP issue that we're going to bring back to is a 15-year amortization. And that's what Veda felt comfortable recommending to the board, that that amount of debt be amortized over that period of time. The maximum length that we can do the capital outlay is the five-year. We've structured it as far as it will go. So therefore, you will not be able to finance the whole Johnson Control scenario for the capital outlay. Plus, Johnson Control can be done under the lease statute for the state of Kansas, which means that we can do a COP for that with just board approval. And one of the things that the board could do is still issue the COP. And if it is desired to do so, they could ask that the capital outlay funds received be designated for the payment for the COP or on an annual budget basis to come from the general fund and allow those capital outlay funds to come from different sources from that. Hopefully, I explained that well enough for that. But the capital outlay is not going to be able to fund the whole Johnson Control system.
No, it won't go to term, I understand that. No, but it gives us a five-year window to re-figure a budget or increase our enrollment or do something else without increasing our tax burden because that's the key. Because otherwise, we're talking about borrowing that much more money from the taxpayers every year to pay for the COP. If we can find a better means of doing that into the budget without increasing our mill levy in the end, then that's what I would feel more comfortable with.
Well, I'm thinking, and maybe Glenn can help me out with this, that it can be amended to possibly be used for the Johnson Controls, but it doesn't have to be used for that purpose if the board decides to use those funds for some other matter. But you will have control on how those funds are spent. So if you want to.
Which is why you suggested if they feel strongly, take this Student Activity Center part out and leave the Ransom, correct?
And add maybe just the worst, and other deferred requirements. Yeah. And that's the option that the board has to do those things.
What is the pleasure of the board? Do you have a recommendation in front of us?
I'd move to amend it with the wording above to strike the Activity Center with the replacement of that being other deferred maintenance as worded.
To Activity Center equipment and improvements, right, is a part that you?
Correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. Looking at the obligation, yeah. So in the resolution, yes. The non-equipment for the Activity Center. Is that the wording in this?
That's not the wording in the resolution. The resolution is Activity Center equipment and improvements.
Under the project description?
Yeah.
Dr. Press, well, it says Activity Center equipment and improvements.
Then that's striking that.
I'd like to ask Roger what the impact would be on the Activity Center project.
Well, I guess I wasn't aware of what we were doing here tonight. I thought this was something we were going to talk about in the next, our next meeting.
Plus the 1.3 million that was taken off.
Okay. The 1.5 that we were looking at for equipment, all of that didn't qualify for equipment. This is where the 324,780 comes in. That's the part that didn't qualify. So you're talking about COPs for 1.3 million. This is the total project that we was talking about to get the cash flow.
Well, we will have the cash flow. What we were doing is we're borrowing money upfront, and then we will have the cash flow from some donations we have coming. I don't want to talk about that until before.
So then at the next meeting, we can talk about another 1.3 million that we need.
And Veda?
Well, that's Veda, how we can accommodate that.
Okay, we are, we were going to do the COPs for the Johnson Control and the COPs for the Student Activities together, and that would save us $25,000. And the total of the Johnson Controls would be 216,000. 1.3 would be 109,000. So we would be asking the foundation for 109,000 a year.
Plus than the capital outlay portion?
The capital outlay portion, if you were determined to go that way, would be another 67,000. So you'd be looking at us building the foundation 167,000 a year.
And I don't know about the timing of it, but I suspect that if you don't approve it as part of the capital outlay, that means those parts of that project will have to wait till funds be, are raised. But then how does that time out with doing a COP for the other improvements? So I don't know if not doing this means that we don't bring the COP issue back to the next meeting or not, because we cannot finance those improvements with a COP relative to bond attorney.
Yeah, you just wouldn't have the 324,000. You'd just have to, you know, fundraise that total rather than it being 67,000 a year.
My thoughts would be not to borrow any more money for the Activity Center, just pay for it as it comes in. Because that's what we were told we were going to do from the beginning. So why not? Hold your feet to the fire on it. I mean, maybe, maybe I just misunderstood what we were told.
Yeah, well.
That's what I heard.
You know, unfortunately, I think it's going to put the foundation in behind, but.
How so?
Because.
I mean, I understand the overlap in the timing, but this is what we voted for specifically was that we were going to fund what we're funding. The rest of the money was going to be fundraised, and that if that part of the project didn't get completed yet, then that would be put on hold until that money was raised. But if we're going to borrow the whole thing to start with, why don't we just borrow the whole thing to start with? That was the plan. I understand that this, but the thing is, and the scary part for us is that I understand Veda's telling us we're going to, the foundation's going to make a $160,000 a year payment to us, but what guarantee do we have? Because we're the ones still holding the responsibility for that if it doesn't come. And I don't, I haven't seen guarantees from anybody yet for that 160,000. And I understand, Roger, you can't give us those names right now in a public forum, but if that's there, then maybe we'd feel better about it. But I know Dr. Joy's concern since day one's been the money's not in our wallet, and if we don't have it, we shouldn't spend it.
I think I've talked ever since we started this program that what you do when you get donations is, your large donations come in on a yearly basis for so many years, or maybe longer than that. You hardly ever get large donations that are big numbers. It's easier to ask for money for so much a year for so many years. And that's what we have coming in. But right now, I'd rather, because this is an open forum, I'd rather go into an executive session if we can find a reason to do that, and I'd be more than happy to talk to them.
That's what our legal counsel, I don't know what the rules are on that.
I don't know what exception you would use, Roger, just off the top?
Well, I don't know, and we've talked about that before.
Right. I think that's an issue of whether we can go into.
And so I've kind of danced around that by handing you things and doing things at meetings without having to get into the depth of it.
I understand that.
I didn't think we were going to get into this this month. We were going to get into it next month. And I would be prepared to make the presentation.
Sure. And I'm, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Roger. I just, I'm asking a question because it's part of what we're voting on tonight, so we kind of have to. I know that a big part of it was for next month.
I think what, the way I would look at it is, why don't you go ahead and do the deferred maintenance? We'll, we'll work out the deal with the Activity Center. Veda had just worked out a deal that would work out very well. We would, we would have the cash flow to reimburse the college. I just, I wasn't prepared to get into that.
So could we delay that till the next meeting?
The whole thing? Or just?
Well, is it necessary that we do part of it tonight?
I think, I'm not an attorney, but I give all these opinions anyway. Again, funds are going to have to be approved for dispersment by the college. You can leave the resolution as such and still not fund the auditorium, but it'd be published that you were. And that's the issue that maybe some of you are concerned about, and that's legitimate and such. But just because it's on the list of possible improvements, it doesn't mean that's what's going, what those proceeds are going to be used for. Regarding the timing of selling these general obligation bonds, there may be some issues on getting funds to get started on the deferred maintenance project.
The issue is, we do have a bid on the south parking lot, and it was good for, I mean, running out of days. And we wanted to get started on this because the bid follows this, approving of this, then we go into approving of the bid because we want to get the parking lot done before school starts. You want to speak to that?
Well, they did give us a bid, and they're, they're willing to hold it for a few more weeks. The thing is with that, we were trying to do this in a time where we wouldn't interfere with CDC and Cosmo and shut them down for one day. CDC runs just about, their holidays are the only time they get off. They work Monday through Friday every time, every day. So we were trying to get this to go to where we could work a few days to cover up where CDC can still get in there and then bypass. So it's all a timing thing with working that out. Once students get here, there's about, we did put it on ourselves to strike the parking lot. So I'm sorry, we're not just as fast as a regular company, but we're going to save quite a few thousand dollars by doing it ourselves. So it's kind of. So it's kind of a time deal with us. We saw it here in still the first part of June. We're going to have football camps, a few people coming in in middle of June. Then July gets really busy. Summer school's going to be going on. So that was just a push for Veda to get that done.
Can we just amend that so that we're not spending that 324,000? Can't you change the resolution?
We can amend the resolution for what the, for what this is going to be used for. We can amend the size also. But I also had a thought, hope staff doesn't mind me bringing it up. But I heard, thought I heard something about a special meeting that you might have? When, when was that going to be?
It's Chairman Conan said they probably scheduled within the next two weeks.
Okay. If we go to table two on my handout, in, in bold is board meeting dates. May 26th is you're considering the resolution for the proposed improvements. And you have to pass the resolution for cash basis to get authorization to spell, spend money or enter into contractual agreements to do the roads that they were talking about. June 23rd, we'll be back with the bids for the bonds. Close on July 15th, funds are delivered. As a possible suggestion is that you could pass the resolution as is tonight or amend it, however you want to do that. But at your special meeting, we're going to start adding to the agenda possibly, is then you could give Veda direction at that special meeting to amend what the project's going to be used for or amend the size of the bond issue at that point in time. If it is, if the meeting is by June 9th, then we send out bid documents two weeks prior to the bid, the bid date. We could send bid documents as late as one week. Don't like doing that. But if we had directions from the board after a special meeting and hopefully by June 9th, then we could adjust the size of the bond issue. How those funds are spent for can be adjusted and provided by the direction of the board at any time. The big concern is, do we really want to do a bond issue for a million 520 or not? That is what I would like to have decided tonight and if not by your special meeting within the next couple of weeks. But we basically can be maneuverable, malleable to whatever the board's wishes are. We're just trying to throw out some ideas so you guys can make the decision on what you think's appropriate.
John, clarify a point here. Did I hear you say that the 324,780 for the Activity Center, if we approve the resolution as it's written tonight, that there will have to be board action at some point in time in the future for those funds to be expended?
Today that you're saying we are busiting, a bond council has to have a reason to sell a million 520. Tonight, you're saying the reason is 324,000 for the Activity Center. However, at your special meeting within the next two weeks, you can ask that those proceeds not be used for that and will either need to reduce the size of the bond issue with that notification by June 9th or you can say, or Veda can go, well, if you're not going to use it for that, I can use it for this, this, and this. And you can approve it at that special meeting.
I'll save the table, the whole thing till our special meeting.
And then Roger, would you have other information by then, excuse me? Would you have other information by then on the issue?
In two weeks, I may have.
I'd just like to have all the information we can get.
And then if not, Veda can prepare an alternative proposal with the other things that you guys would determine will be next on the list to tackle. Because I don't, I don't think any of us are in disagreement that we need to proceed forward with the capital outlay bond and work towards our deferred maintenance. I wholly am supportive of that, so, but how that's, how that's worded, I think is very important.
Again, you can authorize it, but not approve it. If that's double talk, I'm sorry, but that's the way it works. But if you're uncomfortable even saying that you've approved it, then that's your prerogative.
When I look at this, this item for the Activity Center as a way for the, the foundation to be able to fund this 324,000 because of the way the gifts are coming in over a period of time. And I really don't see anything wrong with doing it that way because in the long run, the foundation is going to be paying 324,000. So as far as I'm concerned, I'd leave the resolution as it is. The board's still at a point in time, if they want to amend it, they can amend it.
I'll make a motion to table this till our next meeting.
A second. All right, we got a motion and a second. We, we never needed to get a motion to get it on the table, did we? Did we ever have a?
No, there's been, not been a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. But we can tell that before we have it.
It's an action item. Let's, let's tell them.
I'm not supposed to talk, but my only concern is what is required for that street project that they're talking about as far as tabling it. I don't know what kind of timeframes you're working under. But otherwise, I don't care when you issue the bond unless there's a specific reason to proceed, as staff may have.
They can wait, can't they?
Excuse me?
I mean, it's not a hard deadline. We have to get it done by.
We don't know when the meeting's going to be either. Well, it sounds to me like we'd have to have it by June the 9th if it's going to meet Craig's schedule and everybody else's schedule. Is that right?
Got the motion, yeah. I don't think there's debate on a motion to table.
You want to amend that to set a date, honor before?
To table it?
Pardon?
For tableing it?
Yes.
It's Dr. Joy's motion, so I'll have to let him do it.
No.
Honor before June 9th?
That's fine. I mean, I don't see what the rush is, but if, I mean, if we're going to have a special meeting anyway, we can talk about it then, whatever the date is.
All right, so that you could add the, add the language honor before June 9th or the table it until special meeting honor before June 9th?
When is June 9th? Within two weeks?
About. Well, I have a question. Why couldn't we do the part that Veda is really concerned about with the parking lot and so forth and continue with whatever we want to at the special meeting? Couldn't we do that?
Isn't it all or none?
No, I was saying, we, we draw out the part that Veda needs for the parking lot and whatever's included in that. Wait on the Activity Center until the special meeting. Can we do that, Glenn?
Right now you got a motion and a second to table. My understanding is on a motion to table.
Oh, did we have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
So I think you have to vote on that motion to table.
All right, we'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Those opposed? Just a motion passed. Can we try to get it on the June, the honor before June 9th? We got a signal back here, I think.
Well, you can continue to discuss about it. You can change after discussing this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word you said.
Needs to change the tape after we get done discussing this.
Okay.
I'm fine trying to get it before the 9th.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
One opposed to that, we need to get it done.
All right, we'll have a revised plan then by the special meeting. We'll try to get the special meeting honor before June 9th. Okay?